We're just going to have a meeting for 3:00 and 6:00 PM on April 22nd. All councilors are present in the Pledge of Allegiance. Evening, it's nice seeing the sun coming through the window.
Yeah.
Right, item 49, we are going to open with a public hearing on the mineral extraction ordinance first reading. So that's opening at 6:03. We will welcome any residents or community members to come to the podium.
So I'm sorry, I thought you might have coordinated with Roy.
I was wondering if we could put Don first, or can we do that? Or at Ben's next, maybe? No, not that, Don Holliday. Sorry, he was here to discuss, and he had some questions that he wanted to ask.
Just one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're skipping down to item 28.
It's okay.
Yes.
All right, we're going to skip down to item 28, consideration of recommendations from the appointments committee. Because we currently have one of the applicants for the Winter Utilities District Board of Trustees here in attendance. Don Holly. Hello, thank you for coming.
Hi, Don, how are you?
I'm good.
Good. Even Andy would like to know if, should the time ever come when we need to discuss an expansion of the sewer and water lines? If you're at least amenable to having a discussion about that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm opposed to expansion at all.
I'm good then.
I would add, I wouldn't put it on the tax of our current rate payers.
That's fine. That was my only question. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks.
We're on item 28.
What's that?
Well.
Yeah, I wanted to open this, this, this Utilities District Board of Trustees and the, for discussion amongst the councilors. There was some input, there's some people had some questions, I just have to open that one up. But I'm prepared for other appointments, but like get some input from other councilors. Anybody have any input?
In regards to, just in regards to just the winter futility or?
Well, it's the appointments, they're going to be multiple appointments, being Roger, Roger Hanson, Don.
Yeah. And. Now, Don, you're reappointed, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And Larry.
And how many seats?
We have three appointments and two, two new appointments to fill one seat. Two candidates to fill one seat.
Which one of those?
Being withdrew.
I don't.
Kerry withdrew as well.
The only thing is, I think in the town ordinance, it says that their terms are supposed to be staggered one year apart. And I know there was some adjustment that had to be done one last year ago, a couple years back.
Are they staggered? Are they staggered currently? Are we doing an appointment for somebody else?
Utilities district appointing.
Not the other. Yeah, so his retirement expires. It's on a whole term.
Right, okay.
At that point, they'd have to be reappointed every two years. Yeah. Set agree.
I had a hunt for it, and then I found that I realized it's supposed to be every staggered, so they're a year apart, every one of them.
Yeah, so there's two. Hold on here.
Even if Don will remember at one point.
There's Kerry Huff. There's Larry Merrifield and Roger Hanson, correct? Those are the three.
Yeah.
And then Don Holly would be a reappointment. So there's two, out of those three candidates, there's two positions.
So are you presenting a recommendation to the council this evening?
Well, I was looking for some input from other individuals.
I'm good.
They definitely all.
Yeah, I'm good with the two other candidates.
The two other candidates is one position, but we're on setting recommendations.
I thought you just said there are two positions.
There's two seats available, there are three candidates, one of them.
Okay, so there's. Okay.
One is a reappointment. Yeah. You went to reappointing in one seat, but you don't approve the reappointment, then it's two seats.
Right.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with any one of them. I mean, I'm. You know?
And Kerry Huff is withdrawn as well? And we told.
She, she is not here, but I think that's fair.
Yes, that's what I was told.
Then we don't have a lot of options.
What's that?
We don't have a lot of options anyway.
Keep Don in this seat.
It's easy.
Yep. We both seem adequate. Now, Roger's going to attend this meeting, right? Not that. He's on a.
Now, Roger was on the zoning board for years, I worked with him.
Yeah.
He'll be an excellent board member over here.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Would mine have Larry in?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean.
Roy has to name the three candidates, so I'm going to go.
I have to name the three?
You've got to make a motion and tell us that you want to.
Yeah, recommendations to the.
Recommendation, there you go.
Okay. I'm going to recommend. The. I'm going to recommend Larry Merrifield and Roger Hanson as appointments for the appeals board.
Yeah, for the Utilities District.
Doing this all.
Are we going to do Michael Demme for the zoning board of appeal?
I'm going to pass. I want to reappoint Rick Dory.
Realization for grants or commitments.
So, so I might say, let's just like do this one at a time, starting with the water utilities.
It's in one item one. So you have to break.
Break it up as well. So, all right. Larry Merrifield, Roger Hanson.
Well, you do get them separately, I believe.
I move to appoint.
Larry first.
Roger Hanson. To utilities district. Board of Trustees. There we go.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Larry Bestrell and Roger Hanson to be with the utilities. Larry Field, excuse me.
So that's.
Roger Hanson, so the Winter Utilities District Board of Trustees. All in favor? All in favor?
So that means Don and Holly out?
I would also like to appoint, he's not on here. The Matthew Neto was not on here, but he was a new appointment. Can I, can I, for the revitalization committee, he's not on our agenda, but can I appoint him if he's not on our agenda? This was taken, this was an item from a previous agenda, it was item 28. Copy from a previous agenda. Because we tabled it, so I'm wondering, he, he didn't make it on this agenda, but can I appoint him?
I would say chair's discretion.
Yes.
I'd like to appoint Matthew Neto to the village revitalization committee.
I'll second.
All in favor? All in favor?
I don't, or you didn't win. Yeah, I mean, we had talked about not appoint, not doing any appointments on the zoning board of appeals.
We can, we can table that.
Okay, motion?
I move to table the appointment for the. Texas zoning board. Zoning board of appeals board.
All in favor to table the zoning board?
I would like to know why. Not that I'm unamenable to it, but.
What's that?
What, we're going to take that one?
Why?
Yeah.
Because I had, had some discussions and based on the, based on the application, the input that I've had, I.
We're committee chapperson's decision.
Good enough.
Okay, I think that sums it up, our item 28. Turning around and going back to item 50. Public hearing of the mineral extraction ordinance first reading, we will open the public hearing at 6:13. And we'll welcome Don Emerson, our planner. Hello. Nope. Don Emerson, Winter Town Planner. Just give you an overview of what's happened in the last year. In March of 2023, the council initiated a moratorium on mineral extraction ordinances. It resulted as an application that had come at that time. There was no pending application at this time, we're just talking about mineral extraction ordinance and anything that may come board after that. So the, the. Moratorium actually expired in March, it has expired, however, I worked with the town council, the town attorney, and there is language in the draft ordinance that was posted to the public that you have that makes the ordinance retroactive, so should an application come in, it would still be under this ordinance when the council adopts it, in whatever form that may be. So.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Well, make sure it's been, yeah. There wasn't one, Don up there. Don Holliday. Very good.
Do you want to back up at all, or just keep going?
No, I keep going, I'm okay with that, I want to make sure that everybody was good, could hear you with Zoom and all in the audience.
Yes. So, last thing I was just mentioning was that the moratorium date of expiration has actually gone by, but we worked with the town attorney to make sure that that gap is covered by some language in the draft ordinance, and it's also identified in the memo that went with the ordinance to this evening and posted online. So after the council instituted the moratorium a year ago, the candidate valley council of government worked with the planning board, they came up with a draft ordinance to start reviewing, which is an album of different communities that they had looked at. And the planning board board shopped that draft at multiple meetings. And at different points, they took public input informally and informally, so there was some discussion at meetings, and then there was formally noticed public cameras where people spoke as well. So I said there was a little give and take on that, and I hope you'll all support that point. So, final draft is before you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions on it, I do want to make a note that it was brought to my attention just this evening, but that there is a scrubber reserve that was already identified at the last planning board meeting where they discussed this on page 23. H, there was a measurement that was, that was supposed to be identified at the end of that sentence. Measured at 300 feet from the last site, and that was a point the planning board was discussing at that meeting. And I was to follow up to different planning board members to make sure that it got worded correctly. And as a result of that, it got omitted, it was just a scrubber reserve, it was not intended to be taken out. So I would recommend that the board, that the council consider adopting this language as recommended by the planning board and to repost the item with that change for the second meeting. Questions or comments from the council?
Is that recorded as it, and put up in any board meeting? So this will be amended?
Is it recorded?
To make sure that the planning board, exactly what they approved that verbage of letter H on page.
Yeah, I can go back that and look at the records and the notes, but it, I do recall from memory, and should be reported that that was placed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure before we vote on it, that it's actually here. You know, concrete and everything, so I just want to make sure that that's on.
Yeah, and so keep in mind, this is a first of two readings. And so this is sort of preliminary approval, if you will, and if any changes are made, then we will repost the ordinance with any changes that might be suggested.
I just want to say, I read this back and forth and backwards, and I looked it all over, and I think it's very well done. I mean, it looked really good to me, I didn't miss that piece of it, because I didn't listen to meetings, but I liked everything that they put in there, listening to some, a couple constituents that sent me some emails, they, they liked the way it was written, especially some neighbors that are at a maybe a potential site, so I'm comfortable moving forward with this ordinance, so.
I've heard from a constituent this morning, Steve McDermott, I think he's here. If you could come up possibly, if I could ask you to speak about the aquifer protection overlay zone.
Hi, good evening, Steve McDermott. One of the, what I just, what Councilor Burns was referencing is, in the initial draft submitted by KB cog, there's a reference to aquifer overlay, aquifer protection overlay district, which we don't have. But it gives, what that language statement gave, protection to known or mapped aquifers. What Winter does have is a groundwater protection ordinance from 1985 that was recently found by Don by doing some digging, and that was removed from the KB cog draft, it's no longer in there, it required a groundwater analysis for any activities that would be near or known or mapped aquifer. What there is is a stream protection resource area in the rural district, the only district where mineral extraction activities are allowed, and a map aquifer, as identified by main IFWs beginning with Habitat Program. So one of the things I pointed out in at a planning board meeting was, if we know there's a map aquifer that impacts groundwater drinking and wells, should we maintain the language from the KB cog draft document, but rename it in a way that addresses and is responsive to our zoning or existing ordinances to protect aquifers?
Thank you. That was a CIP provision, that gives in regards to that. I think the protection of the drinking water in that area is paramount, and any unnecessary drilling and blasting can have an adverse effect on that.
Thank you very much, Steve.
I got something. Okay. There's at least two occasions here where, and the one I just happened to look at is on page 27, section 3. It says, upon inspection by the CEO or their designee, the code enforcement officer is the only person in this town that's authorized to enforce the ordinance. You cannot just decide to designate Bob Smith to go look and make a decision. You can hire consultants, whatever, and go out there, and you can get their opinion, but the code enforcement officer makes the final decision. That's a matter of law. So I won't vote against unless this, their designee thing is taken out.
Yes, you do. Yes, I think the intention of that language is that the code enforcement officer could use a consultant, could use a third party, in that the code enforcement officer would still oversee and make the final decision, but they could use someone who has more expertise in whatever that area may be, that's air quality or sound. But it doesn't take away from the fact that the code enforcement officer is the ultimate decision maker. So maybe the language just needs to be clarified, because I don't believe the intent was for him to pass on the ability to do that.
I would appreciate a clarification, that would be good.
Probably just say without delegated authority, I use consulting.
Yeah, so the way I'm reading that, it doesn't sound like the CEO or the designee would have any sort of authority, it's simply that they would be the one who would then report to the town council planning board and approved owner operator what was found during the inspection. And then the owner operator would have 30 days to remedy any deficiencies, so. So it looks to me like in that sense, the CEO or their designee would be just reporting to a, to a higher body that would then ask the owner to remedy the situation. Well. But if we need to clarify that, we could.
I mean, in theory, maybe you would want Don or someone that could be, it says planning, the planner, so, you know, planning board. That maybe we'd have, and that might be a situation where I could see, the CEO saying, if Don can go look at this.
Yeah, I, I actually don't think that that's an appropriate role for the planner in this, because at this point, you're talking about enforcement of the ordinance, and, and the planner's job is simply to come up with the order, so.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same issue to Don's point, just be using a consultant to come in, to have more expertise to weigh in on what the findings might be.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I, that's all I'm really asking, you know, if, if the code enforcement officer decides this is something, you know, beyond his experience or expertise, he's able to, say, hire a consultant, you know, and bring that consultant in, take that consultant's opinion, put it together with zone and make a final decision. Okay, he can't just designate somebody to go out there and make a decision. The code enforcement officer has to make the decision.
Yeah, but I don't think that's the intent.
Well, may not, but it could be used that way.
Yeah, it does sound like.
I think so, that's just, it's an easy change.
Yeah.
And then I'm good with this. Thank you, Don.
Thank you. So when these, I was trying to get understanding where we go from here, we've got two amendments. Should we, can we have those amended before we say green, or we can say green for those two amendments pending, and then do the final reading?
Yeah, and that's part of what this process is for, is to gather any input that may lead to some tweaks or adjustments to the, to the ordinance. So what will happen now is Don will take what's been said here, incorporate it into the ordinance for the second reading. At that point, if you're comfortable with it, then you can finally approve the ordinance.
If I could just summarize what I heard, since you're moving forward, I actually had three notes. One was adding language in from the original KB cog draft ordinance to protect the groundwater, referencing the aquifers. Talking about that scrubbers there, not actually an amendment, but the language would be changed from what you have in front of you regarding the blasting area, the measurement from the blasting area, and then the last meeting, what you just discussed about the CEO clarifying that language in terms of him being able to designate, him or her being able to designate someone else.
Or hire consultant. But they're still.
Thank you.
Page 10, page 27, Don. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I also received, yes, some emails of support, I did receive one from Matt Kellen in support of this, expressing that, and then we also have Phil Sutie, who wants to read a letter of support.
Well, first of all, folks, thank you very much for, for being here with us tonight. I personally want to thank all of you for your support during these past 560 days. It's been, it's been that long since the planning board first took up the application for, for a quarry and went for a lot of water has gone under the bridge and over the bridge since then, the wet spring we've been having. Though this process and the occasional contentiousness at times, our group of over 600 citizens has strived to maintain a disciplined and convivial approach to our comments and suggestions to the planning board. By doing so, the favor has been returned. And I, for one, have the utmost of respect for what these residents do as part of their duties. Was not easy, it was complicated, but somehow we get to the other end of it. The mineral extraction ordinance incorporates many of our requests and interests, but mostly it respects the residents' health and welfare. This was our number one objective from day one. Protect our homes, water, air quality, and health. This document goes a long way in achieving this goal. Did we get everything we asked for? No. Can we live with what's being proposed? Yes. Is it still possible to run a mineral extraction operation in Winter with these guidelines? Absolutely. If at any point in the future we realize that we missed something egregious or that there's loophole in the ordinance, I'm convinced that this town council will respond appropriately and correct any oversight this ordinance might have missed. As such, I fully endorse this mineral extraction ordinance with the changes that we've mentioned tonight, and will urge our fellow residents to do the same. I thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gil. Want to thank Don, our planner, Gil, the residents and planning board for contributing. Do we have anything else from that council or residents?
Yeah. I, I think, thank you from the council's call, because this did get a little contentious, but it did not get out of hand. And everyone stayed reasonable, all of our citizens spoke, for lack of a better word, quietly, and tried to present solid facts to us without getting excited. Parroted away, they made their points, and those points went home because of the way they presented, so thank you very much.
Well said, Andy, so at this time, the chair will entertain a motion with those amendments as noted.
Second.
Right, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you. Right, moving on to item 51, we will open a public hearing regarding the cable franchise agreement contract renewal. I'm actually going to close out the previous public hearing, it's 3:00. Cable franchise agreement contract renewal, and so I believe that we get some questions regarding this. Such as how many subscribers a franchise fee? What is the total amount of franchise fees collected from Winter subscribers in a year? Does that amount collected match up with the amount conceived by the town? How can we verify? And I did receive an email in response that all Winter Spectrum video subscribers pay franchise fees as outlined in the franchise agreement, meaning through the town of Winter, the town has elected to impose a $5, 5% franchise fee. It's collected from the Winter video customers monthly and paid back to the town annually. We also have a letter that was accompanied, that was mailed to the town for a check in January of 2024, and an itemized breakdown by services and gross revenues. Do we have any questions from the council regarding this franchise renewal agreement?
No, I'm good to go.
I'm assuming, Anthony, you've been negotiating back and forth with these guys.
Yeah, that's correct, it's pretty much a boilerplate contract, it's pretty standard. You know, one thing I will say, because we get a lot of questions about, actually, the way that this all came up was that we had a citizen approach us, and he was upset with the rates that he was being charged for, for cable. And I told him that the franchise agreement really didn't regulate those rates, although there is a clause in here that allows municipalities to do so to the extent that is allowed by the law, but the law does not currently allow it, it's just written in there just in case the law should change. But, but anyway, so he wanted to see the franchise agreement nonetheless, so it's in a scurry to try to find it. And our executive assistant found a copy from 1993 and thought, surely this is not it. As it turns out, that was it, and so we figured it's probably time to update the agreement. And this, and this, this contract does have a 15-year term, and so they were agreeable to changing some of the things in there that we thought were a tad.
What were the changes?
Oh, you know, it was things like, they wanted us to post notice of these public hearings and so forth in the newspaper, which I think is, as a former newspaper man, I think it's, it's not the best way to reach your audience, and it's awfully expensive too. They also had some language in there about wanting to alert them every time there was an address change, but that was only for annex land, and we're never going to annex any land, because all the land around this is already spoken for, so it was just little niggling things like that. They also did allow us, one other thing I do want to mention is, they also did allow us to offset the cost of cable service to some of our facilities, so we do get cable services at our ambulance, police, and fire stations, because that's important depending upon what's going on in the news at the time, and then also at the middle school and the grade school, so. The previous contract had different facilities, different address. The previous contract had different facilities, different addresses, and so this was also allowed as a way to clean up that stuff.
Move to approve the renewal of the cable franchise agreement.
You haven't closed the public hearing yet.
Yeah, so if there's no further questions or comments, we will close the public hearing at six thirty-three. And so item fifty-two, consideration of renewing the cable franchise agreement between the town of Winthrop Maine and Spectrum Northeast LLC and indirect subsidiary of Carter Communications.
Like to make a motion. Like to make a motion to approve renewal. I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the cable franchise agreement between the town of Winthrop Maine and Spectrum Northeast LLC and indirect subsidiary of Carter Communications.
Yeah, it should be.
All in favor? All are in favor? Right, moving on to, I have the discussion in consideration of the updated comprehensive. Uh, I have also seen some dramatical changes from the comprehensive planning committee. Along some of those out with Spectrum, the council, um, and then also update to one of the, um, paragraphs that we will, um, revise and review and revise as well. Uh, at this time, I believe we also have Kate Cog, Jessica Cogs from Kate, kind of like Valley Council of Governments, uh, here to present an overview.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for coming out for this tonight. Um, this is a brief overview of Winthrop's comprehensive plan update. This is a vision statement that was a collaborative effort between the comprehensive plan committee and the new, uh, members of other committees as well as residents. Maybe the second to read it. For the Zoom audience, Jessica, why don't you go ahead? Winthrop will strive to sustainably provide a healthy mix of choices for, of, for living, learning, working, and playing in a community that embraces people fully being their genuine selves. Winthrop will pursue all this with an eye towards preserving a unique sense of place created by the town's rural flavor, its inviting village, and its elemental natural beauty. What is a comprehensive plan? So essentially, it's a guiding document for the town in the direction forward that its residents want to see it go. It's an analysis of current trends, issues, and needs, along with recommendations for areas of improvement. It's not simply a response to state requirements rather than to communities' own needs, nor is it an ordinance, a set of rules or regulations. And it's not a dust collector that just sits on the shelf.
If I can add a comment to that, I think the best description I heard of comprehensive plans came from Jessica's boss, Joel Greenwood, who said that comprehensive plans are meant to be aspirational as opposed to regulatory. So, as Jessica mentioned, this is not seeking to impose any sort of regulation on the community. It's to give us a roadmap of where the community would like to be in ten years, where we aspire to be. I, I thought that was a really good and succinct way of, of Joel, uh, describing that.
Yes, Joel, there's lots of experience with comprehensive plans and a succinct way of putting things. History of comprehensive plans, um, basically, under the Growth Management Act of nineteen eighty-eight, comprehensive plans have become required by the state law. This law stated an explicit goal to address unchecked growth and development sprawl, which was beginning to outpace local capacity for services. While there is no penalty for towns that don't have a comprehensive plan, there is a lot of incentives to have one. So, in short, towns with this state-approved plan receive priority consideration for certain grants and other, other funding options. But there's other benefits as well, as financial, as, for example, regulatory benefits. Um, you can enact legitimate zoning impact fees and rate of growth ordinances. Um, there's a list of others. Qualified for relaxed main DOT traffic permit standards for certain growth area development.
Yeah, and so while we could see some grants that we might not otherwise see, but wouldn't want anyone to think that that's the primary purpose of this document. The primary purpose of this document, as Jessica said, is to give us some guidance on where we want the community to go. And so that's why all the policies and strategies in there are really, uh, important so that we can start working towards, uh, some of the things that will help us get to, to where we hope to be in, in ten years. So that's the primary purpose for that. I, I consider the fact that we did see some grant funding as sort of a, a secondary benefit.
I would agree with that. It's a matter of checks and balances. More benefits of a comp plan. They're broad and they cover a vast array in topic areas. Because of that, they don't go into depth on any one topic area in any real measure like a specific plan would, for example, for open space or a downtown revitalization plan. It's an overview and an analysis of an array of topics, in short. So these are the chapters that are mandated by the Growth Management Act.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, I think the, in my mind, at least the three most important chapters in this are the future land use because that's going to determine the planning that will go involved or how we want the community to develop. Housing, which we know is a huge issue that we've talked about many, many times here and will continue to talk about. And then also just because of the unique place that Winthrop is, natural resources, so we're blessed with eleven lakes. And so what do we need to do in order to be carefree in those ways?
It's interesting, in each town I work with, housing is always, housing and future land use tend to always be hot topic chapters, but each town does have its, its own chapters that really stand out and are unique to that town. So the focus areas that we'll discuss here tonight will be future land use and the policies and strategies, which Anthony already touched on, the policies and strategies. This is a table. This table is a way to have strong goals for the community that can shape municipal activities and community engagement. Associated policies and strategies are created to achieve desired outcomes and track implementation success.
Yeah, and so we've all heard the MAP acronym for, for goals and marked goals. Uh, specific, meas- measurable, achievable, relevant, and then time-oriented. And that's what policies and strategies are. They, they serve as sort of milestones for if we're actually making progress uh, with the recommendations that are made in the plan.
And the other one that we'll cover tonight will be the future land use. The future land use chapter gives an understanding of how the built environment, excuse me, interacts with the natural system. And it also describes where growth is desired and will be directed. The Future Land Use Plan is an evaluation of growth and current land use trends and regulations. It considers where growth should logically be directed to be the most cost-effective to the town and preserve natural resources, essentially. What does a future land use plan do? Essentially, it's, it's made up by decisions of residents. It identifies fiscally and environmentally appropriate areas for growth and investment. These three points highlighted here in the box on the left are the essence of a future land use plan. And so it offers prudent future land use choices that can balance additional growth, preserve the essential community character, and protect natural resources. And it designates areas where future development should be encouraged and where it should be discouraged, which is an essential element to preserving natural resources, agricultural land, and open space while promoting a thriving town.
Yeah, so that last bullet speaks to designated growth areas that we had lots of discussion about. With a lot of help from Pat Ladd.
This was a two thousand and ten comprehensive plan, future land use map. It included some of this area was never, it was a suggested expansion that was never fully adopted for a variety of reasons. This is the twenty twenty-four Future Land Use Map. And it includes double expansion of the designated growth areas as determined through joint effort of municipal staff, residents, and the planning board. This is where I was going to give Pat Ladd a shout out. All right, so goals, policies, and strategies. Every comp plan must contain the state goal, state policies, and state strategies associated with the certain chapters. However, the town can include additional goals, policies, and strategies as well, and Winthrop did. For each and every chapter, they included well-thought-out policies and strategies as well as an implementation plan. So these policies and strategies were determined jointly by the comp plan committee, various boards and committees, and town officials. So a goal is an intention, an overarching objective for what the community is striving. A policy is a specific statement of principle or course of action concerning how to reach a goal. A strategy describes how policies will be put into action, and implementation strategy specifically describes the action to be taken, assigns responsibility, and establishes a schedule and priorities for carrying out the action. The strategy breaks down the minutia of how, who, and when the actions are taken.
Yeah, and so this is going to be really important. Uh, part of this will be creating that standing comprehensive plan implementation committee, a body that's going to hold both the appointed and the elected officials accountable for making sure that they're, uh, addressing in some form or fashion each one of those policies and strategies.
And as Anthony said, appointing the comprehensive plan implementation committee is quite possibly the biggest change, change from the twenty-ten plan. There was no checks and balances. There was no way to ensure that anything, any follow-through or any consistency was done in implementing anything with the previous comp plan. So I think having a standing comp plan implementation committee is an excellent way to ensure things get done. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I, I just had a comment. As part of the two, uh, ten comprehensive plan, and we did in fact recognize a need for, um, you know, a committee to push things along. And, uh, we did for several years hold the committee together, but there's no real support for it. It wasn't an official position.
It's difficult to get volunteers.
Yeah, well, you know, on the one hand, I'm concerned that implementation committee will kind of tend to use a comprehensive plan as an ordinance. On the other hand, I know we need the implementation committee if we're going to recognize what the town's wishes are and keep, you know, our boards and committees going in the right direction.
I understand, it makes sense.
So, um, so, so let me, let me offer sort of another viewpoint of that, Andy, and that is that, um, where I live in Belgrade, there's a comprehensive plan implementation committee. I actually service the chair of that committee currently. But over the past, and so we're now in the process that Winthrop was in, you know, maybe a year or so ago, where we're just starting to work with KB cog to rewrite the, or update the comprehensive plan. And when we went back through the two thousand and thirteen plan, everyone was really encouraged by the amount of stuff that managed to get done in that plan. And that was, I attribute that directly to the fact that there was a body that was holding both the town officials, elected and appointed, accountable for ensuring that progress was being made. And they met every month, and they would take a specific chapter, and then they would have whomever was responsible for implementing those policies and strategies available to them and ask them some really pointed questions about where are we on this and, and what are the roadblocks? And how can we, uh, move forward with some of these things? And if not for that, then I think that plan probably would have become the dust collector that, uh, Jessica described a little earlier.
I think we kind of said the same thing. I, I, we need an, uh, an implementation committee. That's absolutely.
You know, and one of the things, don't, don't be, don't mistake the fact that it's unlikely. It's unlikely that everything in this plan will actually get done. And sometimes there's a good reason for that. I know with, uh, the plan in Belgrade, we got to a point where some of those things where we realized, you know, this isn't really realistic, or this isn't a priority. It sounded like a good idea at the time, but once we tried to actually put it in practice, it wasn't such a great idea anymore. And that's just fine. I mean, it's just meant to be a plan. It's not, it's not, it's not one of the ten commandments, right?
What, what did we adopt when we, when we looked at this earlier and we said only the, only on this side of the lake that designated growth area? Yeah, and I guess this, this implements a designated growth area that's three times what we wanted. And I guess that's my concern. I mean, what is this, what does this mean? Does this mean that in these areas that you have identified here as residential? I mean, does that mean that the lot sizes are getting, I mean, what does that mean for the growth in this town? Um, does that mean wide, spread developments can happen in these areas?
Not necessarily, um, it's where, if you have in talks of new residents, a surge in construction, that's where it would ideally be directed. But given the projections for Winthrop's population, it's unlikely that you're going to have a bill, a boom in building. Um, again, that's, the growth area is more suggestive. There's no regulatory. As you saw with the twenty-ten Future Land Use Plan, half of the growth area wasn't even adopted, the proposed growth area. It doesn't change anything, as far as I know with what you have planned, it doesn't change anything as far as minimum lot sizes or anything in that nature.
So why couldn't that growth happen now? Why do you have to identify it, I guess?
That's part of the Growth Management Act, to delineate where the town would like to see future growth.
One, one quick comment. I, we've talked about this before, like you were talking about the growth area, and she's saying that it doesn't, it's not regulatory. However, we have talked about looking at the, um, zoning ordinance and redoing the zoning ordinance in that growth area, and all the suggestions in here are going to have an impact on that, what we present for the changes to the zoning ordinance. It does, it, 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 it would have an influence on uh, regulatory stuff, although it doesn't offset it, correct?
Yeah, so it's a consideration. So when, when Don works with the planning board to look at, you know, potentially rezoning some spaces, then, you know, they'll. then, you know, the, the zoning ordinance is supposed to align with your comprehensive plan. So they'll look to try to ensure that that is happening. And so, I mean, I think one of the things, I think that everyone agreed on that, that Pat had actually suggested was, you know, there were some pockets of land that were zoned rural that were surrounded by either residential and or commercial and or village. And it didn't make sense to have those, those pockets in, in, in the middle of town that were zoned as rural. And so this is, this is a first step to trying to make that land a little bit more available to developers, not necessarily for, you know, single homes, because you could build single homes in a rural district. But if you wanted to buy, to build, you know, like a subdivision of some sort. And so we all know that there's a, an area of town that's got some, you know, some zoning issues. And I think this is the first step to trying to rectify some of those issues. Pat, do you have a, a perspective you want to share?
But I guess, and, and we've, we've gone through this before in this town. When you're talking about re-zoning certain areas, is it, when it's, when you're saying subdivisions, are you saying homes? Are you saying, you know, projects that are, you know, multiple units that could potentially be, you know, zoned for a certain designation, I guess? And I guess that's my, that's my question here.
I'm sorry, so part of what sorry, part of what we were trying to do is keep the flavor of the town so we have the rural feeling of the town and still maintain that. So directing the growth in a certain area so we can concentrate houses in areas. And still, when you're driving around the country, you have the countryside, you have areas that are farm land that are rural with more expansive road front, with more expansive green space, if you will, and putting more houses where we do have sewer and potentially maybe reducing lot sizes in some of those areas or densely in some of those areas. So again, houses, more families where the services are.
Yeah, so keep in mind right now, our designated growth area essentially follows the path of our water and sewer lines. That was a very conscious decision that you guys made.
Right.
And so, Pat can speak to this better than I can, but do you think there are very many developable lots along those, that infrastructure that could support an apartment complex?
The easiest way to get growth in town is to take our existing homes that we have that are some of our big main street properties and making it so we can have multi-units in those. That's the easiest way to get more houses in town. There are lots, let's say, go down Greenwood Avenue behind Greenwood Terrace, Greenwood Lane, Greenwood, whatever the other one is. There's land there that we can pipe the sewer up to pretty easily. It's not a big run, so it's not terribly expensive for the developer, but those places in town are really, really minimal. I drove around with Dawn and Jessica and we looked to see where we can extend that sewer. Really tough, really, really hard to find. So we're not, we don't have many lots that are going to take nine units or even twenty units.
Yeah, and, and obviously, an apartment complex would have to be where it would be on public water and sewer.
I just want to take a moment real quick just to acknowledge the work that has gone into this. This is something that's taken from the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan and lots, lots of months and hours have gone into this. And aside from, you know, Jessica Cobb and the hard work from Kendrick Valley Council of Cops, uh, governments. Uh, we've also had the Winter Comprehensive Planning Committee, so co-chairs, Pat Savory and Ted Hatch, Scott Ferguson, Penny Prey, Kristen Shumway, and also Pat Ladd over there as she's standing up at the podium. Uh, we also had a resident, Stephen McDermott, who offered a lot of input regarding chapters that address housing and future land use especially. Uh, I know that this was something that I first attended when I moved back to Winthrop and two years ago, uh, two summers ago, and kind of actually got me involved in the town council. Uh, so that says that we think that how much time and effort has actually gone into this comprehensive plan. Uh, it's interesting to discern this out. We're still going over our medical errors, size changes. Um, but we have gotten a lot of additional suggested edits from the comprehensive planning committee. And so I do want to thank you for that and the effort all the time and dedication that you have in that. Um, there was another, uh, there was one other paragraph that was my attention that we may consider revising in this, and it's just on page twenty eight of the comprehensive plan. And it was basically, I think, a general statement, a warning statement regarding the aging of more generation. Um, in the way that it reads, that it comes up, uh, that they are as far as sustaining our community, uh, being some sort of generation. Uh, but, you know, the contributions of that generation are part, uh, I mean, very vast. So maybe, uh, schools that have been developed as well as, um, the contributions that that can provide that's come out there and some other contribution for town. So I think that that's important to recognize, uh, as one of the paragraphs in this city. Revising that before it gets submitted to the state. Um, and then, uh, other than that, I really am grateful for also seeing the the other three policies, recommended policies and changes and things with the implementation committee. Uh, I think that is super, I think that is very important. Uh, I know that a plan can continuously progress and change until it's perfect, but I don't think anything's ever going to be perfect. You can always sit there and find a period out of place or some kind of error. Uh, but I think that it's important to move ahead. So given a couple of those changes that have been noted, those amendments, uh, I think it's important, as it's noted in this memorandum too, that it sets a stage for state consideration and then updating those other documents such as zoning ordinances and like you were talking about, willing use, I think that's important. Um, and then also, uh, creating a standing committee that holds us accountable. I think that's super important. If we want to focus on our vision and where we want to go, we have to sit there and put that into place. So I, I think that this is great with a couple of still minor changes, but those are minor.
I would just like, I would just like to make sure, you know, give the, the, any of the comprehensive planning committee a chance to, um, you know, if they have any input or if they'd like to uh, give us any words or anything about how they feel about the plan or anything like that. If any of you guys have the, are inclined to stand up.
Not to be terribly specific, um, page one eighty four, the second paragraph, upper north pond to store some public water supplies and such should be preserved and protected. The last, next sentence is a little throwaway and I think should maybe rewritten to be a little more specific. Some of the other lakes and ponds throughout town also serve as private household water supplies and thus protected. Just add three words. It's not a big one, but we talked about protecting our lakes. Yeah, and save the lakes. So just one thought.
I just want to make sure that any page documented that it's addressed. There are a couple of critical ones in there that are errors. There's a cemetery that's not on the right road and it's on Turkey Lane. It really is not on Narrow Point Road. There's some things that need to be corrected. There's a couple of great concerns. Um, but what I'll do is follow up the email about those high points that concern me the most, feed an email, right?
Thank you very much.
Sorry, this is it, I think. Um, page one ninety, I'm going to email these to Jessica. The fourth paragraph down, last sentence, the town should update zoning ordinance to be clearer and include the latest standards in legislation and conform with comprehensive plan. Do some words to add. I think that would be kind of tie it together.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I harp on this subject, Pat, but you just said the town should update to zoning ordinance to conform to the comprehensive plan, I believe. Okay, the comprehensive plan is not a zoning ordinance. Okay, that's, that's a nonstarter for me.
Yes, that's a non, that's a nonstarter for me. Town will update their comprehensive plan and then they'll revisit their zoning regulation or ordinance to make sure the two are cohesive and are in, there's no conflicts between the two.
It's, that's far too close to insinuating that the comprehensive plan is an ordinance. The comprehensive plan cannot be a guideline for, for our zoning ordinance or used in any ways in ordinance or its enforcement.
In short, though, your ordinance, your zoning ordinance does need to be updated. There are areas in it that, that need to be rewritten and refreshed to be most up to date.
I'm not arguing that the ordinance may not need to be updated. Okay, uh, what I'm arguing is that the company's plan should not be a guideline for updating the ordinance. People should not be able to sit there and say, it says this in the comprehensive plans, it decides to say this in the ordinance, and that's just plain wrong.
But, but to be clear, it's not mandatory. It's, yeah, it's not mandatory. And so, and so if there's.
Recent statements on the podium said, sounded awful mandatory to me.
There's some statute authority given.
Yeah. And, and so it's, it is important to keep in mind that there's a process for updating a land use ordinance. And that process is, first of all, the planning board makes a recommendation to you guys, and then you guys are the final word after listening to the public as to whether or not to adopt the proposed change. So, um, so as Erin just said, you know, let, let's not confuse the fact that if it's in a comprehensive plan and then becomes the law of the land, it doesn't.
I, I think what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you just didn't like the part of the sentence that Pat proposed, is that accurate?
Yeah. If I quoted Pat or heard Pat properly, and I don't always hear things properly. Uh, she was suggesting that when we work on the zoning ordinance, we should, uh, the comprehensive plan would dictate what type of ordinance we have.
Well, the part of the sentence doesn't necessarily have to be included. I mean, if that makes you uncomfortable, that is not necessary.
I mean, here's my, here's my, my deal with this. If you're looking at the comprehensive plan, we adopt this tonight. You've got growth areas of roughly a third more of what we have right now. And if you, if we're appointing a committee to look at that, you've got enormous growth potential here in this town. And I guess people have to understand that with enormous growth potential, there comes increased services, increased taxes, increased schools. The school's not going to be enough. It, it's, it's, it's gonna, at, at this point, and I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm with Andy on this about the, um, you know, adopting this and saying, well, our ordinance should, should, should reflect this. Because people have to understand, if you're adopting this comprehensive plan, you are adopting a huge growth spurt for the town of Winthrop, and with that comes an enormous cost. So I guess, you know, I'm okay with looking at this and looking at obviously some ordinances in the town here. But what I'm not okay with is saying we have to move to this and we're going to be progressing and we're going to charge that committee with doing just that because I'm just not in favor of, of that much growth here in town. Um, I, I, again, I like open space and I understand the housing and I'm in favor of some, but I'm not in favor of saying we have to go and increase the taxable base of this, of, of Winthrop by a third because we have to, you know, of, of the comprehensive plan. I'm just not in favor of that. So again, I'm in favor of some growth, but not to this extent, I guess.
Okay, uh, just a little rebuttal. I guess, so there's two things going on here. One is, you know, the comprehensive plan is kind of, if, and what you could do, if you could get everything you wanted, we're not going to. So the, um, the market is going to probably be more of a factor limiting any construction projects or whatnot. But we do know that there is an absolute peasant crisis, uh, and Winthrop is not immune to this. So if we want to be able to provide long-term housing, or say someone wants to age in, in place, we no longer have any nursing homes nearby, so I would assume that this may be a reality for a lot of folks. Um, that, you know, if we do age in place friendly, that might mean a family moving out of a raised ranch or somebody has to go upstairs, downstairs each time into houses that are more, um, thought out or appeasable to someone who's, uh, limited mobility. So I think we have to think about that. But I think the concern for the, the, the complete, you know, explosion of development would be limited just by the, the market factor, period. But I do, I don't want to see kind of what we've seen in the past where there were projects that were legitimately um, considered and worked and done, but then, you know, the zoning, uh, was not in line with where they wanted to develop. So I do think it is a role for the comprehensive plan to basically say, you know, this is the direction we're going, but it's not going to necessarily happen, um, in the way that, that you might be afraid of. But, and then also you have to remember, we also get a tax base increase when we have people coming to, so kind of.
You get a tax based increase, but I, I can tell you, can assure you that your schools aren't going to have the capacities. And that's double what we, it's triple what we paid ten years ago or twenty years ago for that. And all the services go up. It never goes down, your taxes. I, I, I just, I disagree with that because my taxes have tripled in eight years. They've tripled. So it is what it is. But I, I, again, I'm not in favor, I'm, I'm in favor of housing. I, I know there's a high housing crisis and I'm not in favor of no growth. But what I am in, not in favor of is adopting the or, the ordinances to necessarily reflect all of this.
Yeah, no.
I think we have to take, take that in piecemeal and one step at a time. But I don't, I, I don't agree we have to conform the ordinances to this comprehensive plan.
Right, and, and that would be the process, right, when we go into those discussions and then approve the zoning uh, changes, uh, when they come forward. So that would definitely be, I think, the time to have that discussion. I think the comprehensive plan in, in itself can be seen as something that is an over, like overly large, realistic thing that, you know, we don't typically get to respect. We'll get to, you know, ten one. But it gives us the ability to make the changes that we need to make and kind of steer development in the way that we know that it will best fit the town. So like right now, I don't see, you know, certain seniors really need housing. And so, you know, they're not going to necessarily be bringing people to school, but they will contribute to the tax base. Um, so, but yeah, I agree with you. I just think that we would have to take it one thing at a time as it comes from the plan.
I'm totally agree, agreement of that, and I believe that this is considered to be a vision, not to be an ordinance. Ordinances will get, come back to the council and we'll approve them then and there. Same thing with the planning board approvals. Uh, so this right now, I believe this is set to be our vision. It's our guiding principles and the direction that we want to take our town. Uh, and that's what we are currently looking at. Was that a question?
Yeah, I have a question. So where do we go from here?
I have a question. Oh, yeah, I sure do. Um, I, I'm a little surprised. And I have been told that our, our new digital maps are complete.
The, the zoning maps, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little surprised that, you know, as a council and our citizens are, are looking at this small map, if those maps are complete, there's no real good reason why we couldn't have a full-size digital map on the screen up there. But this is kind of.
Well, that's not me. I put it together for the PowerPoint and this was off of of PDF that my boss, who does all our GIS work, created. You're right, I should have made a larger map.
I didn't mean to correct you, you know, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it that way.
No, no, you're, you're right. That's a good, it's good advice. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, and I, and I wanted to know, well, I could, I looked on the town website and I couldn't find the digital zoning map.
So I don't think it's been posted yet because we are still waiting to have one more overlay on that. Is that right, Dawn?
That's correct. So Joel is working on that mapping and you may be aware that he changed his position at KB cog recently. So he's straddling two positions, but he's working hard to get us the final maps and he is adding the water and sewer layer for us onto that map, which we don't currently have. And he is connecting, working to connect or assessing database information. So when you click on a parcel, you get the information about the parcel. Um, is it not water and sewer? Who owns it? You know, the history would take you to what you see on a tax card. And that's immensely helpful when you want to do queries. So.
And that's immensely helpful when you want to do queries. So once he does that, the planning board wants to quality check it. Um again, before it goes to the council. So it's very close. It exists, but not to the public yet.
Yeah, and and so she mentioned Andy is gonna merge our tax map and our zoning map. So it's one, one document. And and in fact, the the zone that she mentioned is the same one that Steve mentioned a little while ago, the the ground quarter district. With there being a layer of that just to show where that exists.
Thank you, everyone. All right, I really wasn't taking a shot at you.
It's okay, it's.
So so where do we go from there? Cause we wanna get this adopted so that we can send it to the state and have them adopt it. Start uh trying to.
I would like to see the amendments and everything that we're talking about.
How about that for the state? They wanted us to.
So how about?
Remember just the water area. State wanted us to physically something.
I'd like to uh propose a motion. Winter pound, the town of Winter country had some planned pending noted errors. And had. Additions from Pat lad and a paragraph revision on page twenty-eight.
Third second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the update to the town winter comprehensive plan. I think those noted errors, the additions of. Pat lad and a paragraph revision on page twenty-eight. All in favor? All of those?
I'd like to see.
Motion fails.
Okay, so so you guys want to bring that back at the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd really like to see, you know, uh. Twenty-four by forty-eight map. Okay, with everything you have, some pieces left out, that's okay. But there's no reason we can't see that map and those layers up on that screen.
I I sent it to get, I sent it to you guys, I think, multiple times.
No, no, I'm talking cardboard copies.
Oh no, I'd have to go to Staples or some such to get something like that. But but we could.
Anthony, I can print that.
I was gonna say.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, I. Yeah, we'll, we'll come and get it from you, Jessica, if you can. I forgot that they have a giant printer at KB cog.
One of each, we can see it. It's something we should have on here.
You just say one of each, what do you mean?
One of each one of overlays would be.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, what really is.
You have like a whole pile of maps in the scowl thing you just gave us, right?
I have the twenty-ten map and the twenty-two.
Yeah, but you could pull each one of these. In the, in the information you sent us earlier, there's a whole series of maps, right? Or am I looking at the planets? Am I thinking of the planet?
Yeah.
In the plan itself is. Just this thing will relate, we can kind of look at that. Right, yeah. All this stuff here is part of that mapping, correct?
Yes, you want a twenty-four by forty-eight of each of those?
Think you'd want them on hand anyway, wouldn't you? Don't you have them on hand out by your?
Can you make them bigger?
There's, there's one out there, but not.
We have the old ones on hand.
Okay, it's just potential.
I'll do them tomorrow. But just to clarify, going for the for the next meeting, you want to have this stuff on the agenda to discuss to go over maybe land use.
Any amendments.
Any amendments?
Okay, it would it be too busy if you put all those layers? If you just one map?
Yes.
I would just like to um reiterate that the planning board has been anxiously waiting to look at this and they're hoping to look at it on the eighth, their regular meeting. Um and Joel can provide for that. So they have not officially done their last quality control check. They are anxious to do that and get it to you. So it sounds like maybe these are gonna happen concurrently.
Thank you.
All right.
Note of that. All right, we move on to item fifty-four, recognition of the Spirit of America Award. And so I'm just gonna open up and have a quick discussion. Do we have those at here, Andy? Uh so what is the Spirit of America Award? Thank you very much, the Comprehensive Planning Committee for coming. Right, what is the Spirit of America Award? It's an award presented. Thank you very much. To local individuals, organizations, and projects for commendable service and contributions to the community. Uh anyone can submit a nomination. Typically, town uh select boards or councils will select uh and present the award to recipients. Uh the Spirit of America Foundation is a nonprofit, I'm a one C three public charity established in Augusta, Maine. Uh in nineteen ninety to honor volunteerism. And so, given that April is the month of volunteer uh. The National Volunteer Month, uh we'd like to take the opportunity to recognize two of our dedicated community members. Uh first off, I will sit there and just read. Uh as you may have noticed, one of them uh in a previous agenda item, Stephen McDermott. Uh he was listed as someone who offered keen input in the chapters that addressed housing and future land use discussion. He also stood up and discussed the incorporation of language regarding mapped aquifers in the mineral extraction ordinance. Two years ago, I met Steve at the Comprehensive Planning Committee meeting and he expressed his interest on the housing continuum. Continuum in Winthrop and a concern for affordable housing. He quickly became a resource for the Comprehensive Planning Committee, but he didn't stop there. He provided valuable insight and recommendations on navigating state mandated amendments to our zoning ordinance. He presented the Community Resilience Project Grant as an opportunity for our town to see funds for climate-related projects. Of which we are now pursuing heat pumps and LED upgrades for municipal buildings. He also met with town managers from Winthrop, Reedfield, and Manchester to discuss the housing opportunity. Today, we'd like to thank Steve for dedicating his time and knowledge to educate, present, and share his expertise with municipal staff. Councilors, committees, and working towards improving the housing options in Winthrop. So thank you very much. Maybe we also have a second uh nomination listed again here. Pat love. She cares about housing. A member of the town's Comprehensive Planning Committee and a longtime real estate agent. Pat has in recent years championed moves that could result in more affordable workforce and senior housing opportunities in our community. Winthrop's landscape is dominated by large farmhouse and Victoria Homes. Residences that don't fit the finances or lifestyles in most of the towns of modern-day residents. Pat worked tirelessly on the Housing in Future Land Use chapter of the Comprehensive Plan update to ensure Winthrop's municipal government. Is focused on facilitating housing opportunities that would benefit seniors who wish to age in place, young couples, the working class, and professionals. At the onset of their careers. Her vision was enlightened, has enlightened some of us in municipal government to new housing opportunities, including, including. Tightening developments that include modular and mobile homes. Her support helped politically buoy an ordinance change to allow accessory dwelling units. Throughout her advocacy, she has remained constructive, upbeat, and encouraging, which has instilled the trust in her in the ear of elected and appointed town officials. She has also followed through in their action. Her real estate firm bid. Her real estate firm bid on a contract to sell tax-acquired properties, seeing that as an opportunity to assist in repurposing properties and homes. It feels like momentum is building to address the local housing crunch in a meaningful way in Winthrop. And Pat lad has been at the forefront of that change. So tonight, we wanna also thank you, Pat. Thank you very much to Steve and the dedication board. Moving on to item fifty-five, discussion and consideration of a resolution twenty-two four dash zero zero one. Reallocating tennis court reserve funds to build a new fence of the baseball field and skate park and tennis court reserve funds rebuilt. The beach boardwalk to rebuild the beach boardwalk.
So uh let me set the stage here for for Lonnie and he can answer any questions that you may have. And this is completely his idea. It's, I think it's a great idea. To address two meaningful recreation projects in our community. Uh with funds that we already have in place. So we have a reserve account for tennis courts. And that account currently has a balance of about forty-nine thousand dollars. So what Lonnie is proposing. Is that a portion of those funds be used to build a fence around a new ball field that will sit between the tennis courts and the turf field. So there used to be a ball field down there, but it had to be removed in order to accommodate the new uh after turf field. Additionally, we have an account with nearly forty-four hundred dollars in it uh for a skate park. So what his idea was, we would take that money dedicated to improving the boardwalk, which we estimate the cost of that will be about fifteen thousand dollars. And then the balance of that project would also be paid from these this uh tennis court reserve. Now, the the genius of this idea is that you'd be cash funding two capital projects. That would then allow you to remove that fifteen thousand dollar cost from our CIP this year, just reducing the 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 budget by that amount. So Lonnie, have I missed anything?
That's exactly what I thought. Well, I was here for like that one for my budget and I walked out and. We've got about forty-nine thousand dollars left from our tennis court project. We have one piece left and I'm hoping it's gonna happen in the next two or three days. I'm putting the baskets up on basketball court. Once that is done, we will, we will be done with the expenses on that. We will end up with probably around forty thousand dollars left in that account. Um the rebuild of Maxwell Field. Um is happening soon. Again, paving today kept uh sports fields from doing the work that they were gonna do today. To rebuild that. And I have a fence guy coming in um by the end of this week to put up. On the backstop and uh safety fencing around that ball field. So we'll have a a really nice little ball theater down there, which will. Be renamed as Maxwell Field. And then using the remainder of that money to to do the boardwalk project, which we talked about. Back the uh the at the um capital improvements thing. So I just thought. If we can take fifteen thousand dollars out of the budget, which I know isn't a lot of money, but, you know, I I was just thinking any little bit helps and. Um we were, we've been really lucky with that. Uh we started the project with three hundred thousand dollars uh to rebuild the tennis courts. And uh by some good help from from some good vendors, uh we've been able to to keep that number as low as possible. Here we are at the end of the project, uh with some money left and I, you know, when we initially did that, and I think Linda's, Linda. And Andy are probably the only two that were on the committee back when we first started about this project. You know, um it's been almost six years since we began the project and the COVID hit, all kinds of stuff happened. Uh but here we are near the end of it and we have the opportunity to do a little bit more to make the community a little bit better. Uh and upgrade our recreational assets and um by using no real new tax money and just using money that we've got sitting in the account already. That's the idea. Okay. I mean, no one's had a chance yet to jump up and um say that we shouldn't be spending the skate park money. But uh maybe no one will, but I'd like to conclude any comments with that thought that for years. Well, I was a town council rep to the rec committee uh and Lonnie is part of the rec committee. And we struggled with vandalism, um repairing those things and then I had them ripped apart. Kids down there attracted, kids down there at night and then we proceeded over and tear up the basketball nets and the tennis courts. We finally uh made the decision to haul in things over to the dump and I don't know what I had to do with them. But the idea of rebuilding the skate park, starting that all over again is a nonstarter for me. Uh we even tried to find some young people.
No, that's Amy, that's not, that's not.
I know, I'm trying to support you on spending that money. Uh we tried to attract young people to help us make the repairs and we finally decided to give up on the whole thing. And I think that's the way. Uh it should stay. And I think Lonnie had a good idea of taking that money, spending it on this.
I I have a question. I was just wondering the funding to finish the track that goes around. Uh is that included in that budget or is that separate? Do you know the status of that?
That's a not town-funded project.
Yeah, that's a privately funded project.
The the school.
So got it.
But we can reach out and handle.
Another, just another question. I live down by North Cross Point and for many years we had a plan. That would, that would be probably down and we kind of got uh talking about it and I heard the reason why it hasn't been up for about two years. I was wondering if there was any money in the budget to put some light to being down for flag back at the cross point.
Well, that's actually not part of this um what we're looking at for this item on the agenda. Uh but we can reserve that to public comment at the end.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve um reallocating the tennis court reserve funds to build a new fence at the baseball field, a skate park. And tennis court reserves uh for the beach walk as well.
Second. A second, but I have one quick question for Lonnie before we move. Can I do that? Lonnie, uh I noticed during that heavy rains, we had some damage to the fields.
Mm-hmm.
Have we done anything to make sure that this is not?
The key construction is gonna commit a storm drain down right where that key locks, so that it can get down into the storm drain.
Good.
I don't trust. We don't want it up.
Robert Victorson, when Robert got done with the original, they completely finished Maxwell Field last fall. Yeah. It was all done, I'd received it, everything was done. And uh Robert was so proud of how it was gonna drain. I mean, that field was gonna drain beautifully. And then we hit that monotonous rainstorm and it proved how good the drainage was because our entire infield. Went right down over the hill. The law was uh apparently like Joel said, a couple of the bases.
Yeah, a couple of bases, yeah. And then the wind, the wind got dug out and so we get that. So it's all ready to go and and hopefully uh May fourth. We're gonna rededicate Maxwell Field and have a, and get things going again so kids have a place to play ball.
Are they gonna hold the plan this year?
That's the plan. If we're not, I just spent four days building baseball schedules. It's gonna be a waste of time. Yeah, so the plan is, yeah, uh Bob Bouzier's coming in to defend uh sports fields. It's gonna be in by the end of the week to redo the field. And so we should be good to go.
Lonnie, you need to say the reminder of that one, right?
Yes.
I got kids climbing.
Oh, God. They've been in my, they've been in my garage since uh October.
All right. You just wanna make sure it's maybe installed.
We were, it was supposed to go out Monday or Tuesday of last week. The steel didn't come into McGee. The steel's supposed to come into there tomorrow and as soon as they get it, they're coming to do it. But right now, we've got a paving project going on down there that may. Get in the way for a couple of days, but it's coming.
Appreciate it.
Hey, I just wanna reiterate, just said May fourth, the rededication of Maxwell Field. Yeah, so we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor? All are in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lonnie.
Thank you, Lonnie. Good, good luck, Lonnie. Good spirit. Good luck. You know, I'm.
Yeah.
Moving on to item fifty-six, consideration of resolution twenty-two four dash zero two. Appropriating one hundred thousand dollars from the assigned fund balance for capital reserves to the capital reserve account for a town-wide property evaluation.
Yeah, so this is just formalizing the consensus that was at the uh uh among you, when we talked about this as part of our first budget workshop.
I move to approve appropriating one hundred thousand dollars for the assigned fund balance. From capital reserves to capital reserve account for a town-wide property evaluation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor? Yep. Moving on to item fifty-seven.
Did that one?
Nope.
No, nope.
Consideration of recommended from the appointments committee, committee from Richard Dory.
I would like, I would like to recommend reappointing Richard Dory to the planning board. From associate. Okay, from associate former poll member.
Second.
With the term expiring, call thirty-one twenty-nine.
Any motion and a second? All in favor? All are in favor? All right, thank you. We will move on to other business. So public comment? Do we have any other additional?
Hi, my name's Alan. Most of you know me. I, I live very close proximity to North Cross Point and there has been a flag there. For at least ten of the thirteen years that I've lived there. I've noticed it hasn't been there. And I was wondering what the status of the flag at North Cross Point is.
So what I've been told, Alan, is that. Is that the apparatus on the top of that flag pole has been broken. And so all we need is some dry ground so we can pull a heavy truck in there in order to get up to the top of that flag pole. And fix it. So as soon as the ground dries out enough that we can, you know, get a bucket truck in there. Then we will, we'll fix that, that apparatus and get the flags back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I have one quick question. I, I know that the Lions originally put that up, Anthony. So at this point, are we relying on the Lions to do that or is the town gonna just gotta get it done?
My understanding was the town's been servicing that, that flag pole.
Okay.
As, as a matter of course, if, if there is the cost.
Yep.
Uh, is it possible if we?
So we don't go another year without it? If we continue to have wet weather, can we rent one of those little? Bagging, toe behind bucket trucks that don't weigh anything and do it that way and just get it done?
You know, dealers, talent, that's what we're equipped.
And just.
Not just. Big boy.
Yeah.
Oh, bad, yeah. Sorry. Sorry. Anyway, anyway, so yes, we'll, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get a flag for back, for back to back.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Move on to the town manager's report.
All right. So I think I emailed you folks about this a few weeks ago, but you know, we had the engineer go out and look at the drainage around Spruce Street. And so forth. And he came up with some pretty simple solutions that we think we can mostly do in-house or, you know, I want to. And I have the public works director working on the plans for how we're gonna get that work done. I thought there were two ways we could go about it. We could either just alert everybody by letter and say if they have questions. Comments, concerns, input to, you know, call me. Or we could try to schedule something for a council meeting and have a discussion. Do you guys have a preference as to how that's handled?
An alert.
I would think if we have a plan. And, you know, the plan is what it is. I think we just should alert them and.
All right, I'm gonna go with a letter then and we'll.
Yep.
Move forward. So.
Yeah.
I would say, I mean, I was up there and what he's, he does very straightforward. And the town's perfectly capable to get it done without, like, we're putting in the net for these. If we just move on, move ahead with it.
So this next thing I'm about to say is the most, probably the most painful confession I've had to make in one of these meetings. Andy was right.
That is a painful confession.
Linda feels my pain. So, so. So as it turns out, our two hundred thousand dollar project for the elevator included the cost of the architect. Which is gonna be twenty-four thousand dollars, which leaves us four thousand dollars short even with the contingency. So I just, stop smiling, Andy. So, so anyway, so I just wanted to give you a heads up that we may have to come back to at some point seeking some more appropriations in order to. To make that project happen. But, but the good thing is we've still got ARPA funds available. And we've still got that nine hundred and eighty-eight, now it's eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in our. Unassigned capital reserves that we could, that we could use towards that project.
ARPA funds.
Okay. Today, I submitted.
For you. I'm not the type that's bloated and is happy about.
I think that's what you're, I think that's what you're doing right now. So earlier today, I submitted applications for federal funding to Senator Key and Senator Collins's office. And I think I mentioned you folks want to tell me if you're trying not to want to, about federal earmarks. So. With the help of our police chief, I submitted an application to each of those offices for up to fifty-five percent. Of the funding for our radio communications upgrade. That's the maximum amount we could get. I had conversations with those staffs who were the representative Golden staff, their application's not out yet. And they were all. Encouraging about the prospects of that. So keep your fingers crossed. Hopefully we can, we can get some federal money for that project. As was mentioned earlier, Town Hall Lane is being paid, the finishing up of that project. So that should be done sometime this week. So we had a mooring committee meeting last week. And there were some, and we got down to the end of it and all of a sudden there was this discussion about. Whether or not we should grandfather the existing moorings on the south cove of Moranica Lake. And it turned into sort of a discussion of two different opinions. One is that, yes, we should do that. Those folks have been there. They, their moorage replaced there at a time when. Obviously that's legal, it still is. And we need, and the reason for that, for the whole effort of coming up with a mooring field ordinance, that was the genesis of it. So we need to sort of recognize that and. And honor those people who did it for a while. There was also a school of thought that the mooring field ordinance, when you see it, is basically creates a process for creating a mooring field. And that no one should be exempt from that and that even that field should come to the town council. The town council will be the one determining whether or not a mooring field gets approved. But that should come to the town council for your consideration. And there was, there were some committee members who felt like. Without that, you would be usurping the count, the council's authority. And so there were some, a lot of discussion back and forth. And so I figured, well, the best way to. Maybe figure out how we should move forward with this is just to take your temperature and see whether or not. Grandfathering those existing moorings. Do you feel like that's appropriate or do you feel like it would be some sort of an usurping of your authority to actually approve? A mooring field.
Okay. Want to go ahead, Rick?
Um. I think it was originally intended when we formed the mooring committee. That we had seven members. Is there a chair for the mooring committee?
No, there's not. They decided that they, they wanted to operate without a chair and I'm, I'm just sort of serving as a.
I moved this back as a vote through the mooring committee, whether they want to accept or reject. You have a majority of people that, you know, they. You, you have a vote. And then my understanding was also, I attended the first meeting. I haven't subsequently gone to any other of the other ones, although I've watched them online. But they should be able to resolve this within the mooring committee, have a vote. And make a decision on their own. So they can bring it back to town council for approval.
All right.
All right, then. Okay, two things. Okay, one is, I have stated and everyone knows this, one hundred percent. Out of this mooring committee thing, okay, we're fairly obvious. Because I see the big smile on that there. Okay. That during the process when I was involved. I learned that we were gonna be very careful if, if morning really should decide to grandfather existing mooring field. We'd have to be very careful about assigning more specific people, the town attorney said. That probably wouldn't work. We'd have to find another way to do it. The other thing is, so before we go that route, you want to talk to the town too. That's all you can say. And if we, if you just take the side of go ahead. The other thing is, I only did one quick review of the ordinance. And back when I did that several months back, it appeared as though. It was that survey you took where of all the different opinions, there was three or four opinions. Do you remember that, Jim? Okay, well, it seemed like the lakefront property owners were not in favor of regulating the ordinance. And one thing that I had thought they might want to be aware of is. And clearly, you know, the sentiment is you can't tell me where I can put my boat in front of the property. But they need to remember that. We can't tell anyone else whether you want to put in front of the property either. Okay, that's something for more even to think about. You know, the old one said something like fifty feet for a boat. And it had to be the property owner. And the way it is. You know, with no, and it's, any, any Bob Smith could put his boat in the lake and drive it over there and throw a mooring into the property. The way it stands now. So that's just another problem, another aspect that they may not have thought of. That's it, I'm out of.
So. I'm involved in it. It's just full disclosure. I mean, I had to go through the whole process of this whole thing. I take is on it is. This, I mean, whether I was there or not, it's, it like feels though grandfathering folks that were there because their moorages are placed legally as Anthony put. And I just want everybody to listen and consider this. Not to exempt them from following the ordinance, because they will follow the ordinance. The mooring field ordinance is in place. It's mostly saying you don't have to apply because we're already pre-existing. We're there. And doesn't have to have us run up here to make an application to get approved. This, we're already existing. So it's just saying, we, we acknowledge you're there. We acknowledge that your votes are there legally. And we're gonna have you follow the ordinance, the mooring ordinance, field ordinance in place. According to the guidelines. And then would be, was it the harbor national would be the one to enforce that, making sure that it's expected that that's, that's done. But this place for other people to apply, be there if they want to. But I just feel it's fair for these folks, me being one of them, they had been here without incident for all these years. I think to get a good group of people in the mooring committee that are considering getting, putting this all together. But I really think that that group should be. Grandfathered. So that's all I really want to say about that.
Okay, I, my little.
And you said you were done.
My comments, I just want to tell you, my comments were just cautions based on some of the mud puddles I stepped in. Okay?
Yep.
That, that's all. I wasn't meant to steer anybody in any direction.
I didn't take that.
And the, I know. And the last thing is, I, I agree with Bruce. That we probably shouldn't even be having this conversation. That we thought the committee was going to bring this to us, has failed. Okay? Not that I don't, I might talk to you, Jim.
I would give, you know, kind of some advice to the committee, the mooring committee is either adopt some form of acknowledgement of existing. Moorings in place now and address that within the ordinance. And if not, then you have to follow the ordinance. Regardless. And because of right now, I don't, we don't have any mooring fields, correct? There's a process for that to happen. That process will still have to happen.
Yep.
But I would say if you do want to keep in, and it is a decision that the committee, the committee should be making. But just address it within the top saying, you know, as of anyone, anyone. That way it's not, it has to be.
Okay, I will also agree with Bruce in the sense that I feel that the mooring committee should come to us if they create or make a decision. I do have one question for the mooring committee as far as. For the criteria for establishing a mooring field, are they working on like an appendix with like a checklist of whether it goes to the Friends of the Coffee Sea watershed for review from Alcoyol? Or any other locations or things, considerations?
Yeah, I, I kind of feel like that's part of the application process as opposed to, opposed to the ordinance. And I actually think we've got a really good and strong ordinance that has been reviewed, that has been reviewed by the town's attorney. It's just this one stone. It's just this one sticking point. But, but, but I, I, I agree with Bruce's approach. You know, we'll let the committee decide that and, and then. And then they may get voted, you know, grandfathering may get voted X against Xed and we'll, we'll bring, you know, we'll bring those results to you guys. I guess. So just two other quick things. Our next two meetings, a week from tonight, we'll be meeting at six P M. To discuss more budget items. So make sure that's on your calendar.
What day?
The twenty-ninth. And then the following Monday, so we get to meet three Mondays in a row. We will come back for our regular meeting also at six P M. Because you guys, you know, we did agree at the last meeting to change all the meetings to six P M to make them. Hopefully get done in a decent hour. And on that agenda thus far, we have the second reading of the mineral extraction ordinance that we discussed tonight. But also, and then we'll have the comp plan, but also further discussion about the Zest House. So. They sent us all the materials that were sent to the state as part of their application that's been forwarded to you. So, you know, if you haven't. Check those out. If you, if you haven't yet checked those out, you won't participate in that conversation. I'd encourage you to spend a little time with that email.
One other thing I had wrote down, you didn't give nothing. I was waiting to say, you said anything about the revitalization? Or grant that you just signed up for the heat pumps?
Yes, Efficiency Main has been signing off on those left and right. So Mike, do we have all of them now that have been approved?
Town Hall of the last.
Yeah, so, so, so we've got the approval for all of them from Efficiency Main except for Town Hall. So.
And we did get granted the money. According to what we applied for, we could have that fifty thousand dollars. Special residence.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, how many more budget meetings do we have scheduled?
Yeah.
We, we need to, we need to kind of have budget meetings where we can talk about the budget itself. And I'm, I'm just getting concerned.
Yeah, I, I sent a schedule out previously. I know we had one on the twenty-ninth. I think we have another one on May thirtieth.
I mean, I think we're gonna have.
Maybe we'll just.
We'll probably need more than that, I would think. So I think we need to, you know, schedule maybe a couple.
Yeah, I mean, I sent the schedule out a couple of months ago. So. Yeah, I'll resend it.
Okay.
I mean, I think we need to have a couple of meetings in May. One meeting is gonna cut it.
But let me send the schedule out. We got it. I mean, we've got it mapped out as to what we're gonna talk about when. And, and we would, you know, we approved the budget the first meeting in June last year. That's the, that's the plan this year as well.
Right, but I think we need, one thing we have not done in the last few years is we, we, we end with a discussion of. The, the departments. And we have, we, we used to have a couple of meetings where we would discuss going through the budget. Are there any cuts? Are there not? And I think we need to do that. I mean, that's really, you know, prudent of us and responsible of us to go through the budget. And make sure, so I think, you know, I don't know if there's one or two scheduled, but we, I think we want to schedule a few earlier. So that if we do have, you know, those types of, you know, cuts or changes or anything like that, we don't get caught running up against the June deadline.
So, so just as a reminder, I sent the budget out many weeks ago so that you guys could start looking at that. And we have, I think, like a half dozen or so. Departments that we're gonna talk about next Monday, another half dozen or so the following Monday. So again, I'll. You know, I, I've sent those materials out and, and I'll recently, the, the calendar, I'll resend the budget if, if you guys need that, but.
When do we hear more on the school budget?
I don't know that there will be much to, more to hear about the school budget. What do you?
Well, I know that he said that he had some changes that he could, could make or would. Could make or was planning a little.
Yeah, well, I, I'll talk to him tomorrow. I mean, I think he was down to six point seven percent and that, I think he thought that that was probably as good as it was gonna get, but I'll. I'll double check with him tomorrow.
I, I'm just saying, as you know, you know, you're looking at significant increases again, so you really wanna. Get so that you have two or, you know, a couple of meetings here where you're just looking at the budget. Um.
As a whole.
As a whole, you can't just look at it in one damn meeting.
No, I, and we do, Linda, we have it, we have it broken up over multi, I mean, the first meeting that we had looked at the C I P program. And, and revenues, uh and the school budget in particular, and so, so we do have it broken up um.
No, I get it's broken up, I, I think just a, a, a one or a couple individual meetings where we're just looking, opening it up, the whole thing. We used to do that, and in recent years, we've just been looking at, you know, running up against that June deadline and.
And, and so one thing we are gonna do differently uh this year than, than last year is last year, a lot of it was. The budget presentations were operational in nature, and we're not doing that this year. We're talking strictly budget, that is. What was your budget last year? What are your year to date, uh spending this year, and what's the increase uh that you're looking for? The coming year, and what's driving that increase, and that's going to be the discussion, not.
Well, they're, they're gonna be itemized, right?
What do you mean?
Not just what's driving increase, right? It's gonna be a, a lined, line for line budget.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you guys have received that, I mean, remember, I said that to you previously and it's.
Is there anything else from the council? Another business, do you have anything?
Yeah, but did you wanna do that uh cutoff, that early cutoff? Started at six, cut off at nine, said.
Oh, that's something that we'd have to amend, I think.
Yeah, the rules that it goes.
Rules, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with the nine o'clock cutoff, we start at six.
Yeah, that was my thought, I mean, started out early, we couldn't know.
Is that, it was motion, right, we have to motion.
Yep, just like how we started at seven, we made a motion extend past ten. Do you want to make a motion to extend past nine if we are starting at six?
I'll make a motion that we have to uh.
Say we can't vote on something that's not on the agenda, so.
But we can just discuss, we can directly.
Can we do a consensus?
We'll put it on the agenda if you could for Monday, that'd be good.
That's, yeah.
As an agenda. So moved.
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Motion adjourned.
I know, get the hell out of my email. I'm gonna do that, I swear to God, tomorrow, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it.
Oh, thank you, Shannon.
I know.